I'd like to call this meeting to order. Time is 7:15 PM. Okay, please join us in the pledge of allegiance to the moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment's silence. Thank you.
Is there any changes? Is there the sort?
No, sir, Mr. President, trustees. Mr. President, trustees, number one, discussion of possible action to approve the goals goes if superintendent goes. If you recall, this was the whole intent of putting this as an action item so that we could have both a workshop and then to approve it. So, I'm ready.
So, I move that we approve the goals with one change, which is under the first goal around early childhood education. We're gonna pull out the goal around individual campuses, closing the gap of the number of students written in grade level from beginning of year to end of year by X percent. And we're gonna focus that on grades K to five. So, they'll set that on a campus by campus. So, approve the board goals with that one change.
Is the motion approved? Second. The motion by Ms. Lena, second by Mr. Guerrero, all in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
Any one approve? Motion carries. Two.
Mr. President, trustees, item number two, discussion of possible action to amend DC local. I know that this is something that trustees wanted to put as an intended item for discussion. And I believe you should have the backup in there. It's a one pager, one of one. Highlighted that one area, so this is a discussion for yours, trustees.
This is our current version, right?
Correct. This is as agreed.
Okay, the issue that was brought forth had to do with the hiring of teachers and bus drivers by the superintendent. And the main reason was the concern about the over staffing. So, do we have any discussion, any?
Mr. President, but I, the rationale that I would like to say in terms of, I'd like to maintain that the authority to hire teachers and bus drivers simply because we are definitely in a market of competition, competition for fully certified. We used to be under no childhood behind. Now, we have a new governmental, federal government that oversees this, which is ESSA. And that also does every student succeeds act that replace no childhood behind. And with that alone comes the requirement that we must have fully certified and qualified teachers. And the concern here is that it is not a matter of that guy is superintendent, want to have the authority, not by all means. Is that when it comes to finding the best suitable person to fill that area and they qualify and then they get the question is, well, how, when do I come on board? The response for us would have to be, well, until the next board meeting that we have because trustees have to approve. And that is the only concern that we have. And as you keep, as you all know, that in the elementaries, one of the dilemmas we're having right now is we still have a few teachers that have been here with the district that are non-bilingual certified. And that really does put a little damper in us. We, any and all teachers that we were hiring since the summer, we didn't approve anyone unless he or she was bilingual certified. Up until two days before the reporting time, which was August 18th. By then, we didn't need to say, okay, we don't have any others. Now, we went to the next person that was in line, which is a non-bilingual certified, which is they can only teach non-let. And that's where you find the dilemma. But, you know, instead of having a substitute and bringing somebody who's certified, we went that route. The other thing is like individuals that have composite, a composite teacher at a high school in math, in science, in social studies is a very, very strong asset to that campus because giving you an example of social studies, they can teach ninth, 10th, 11th, 12th. Science composite, they can teach anywhere from bio, chemistry, physics, anatomy, physiology. And so, those are the only examples that I want to give you as far as, you know, minimum in bottom line is that we can bring them on board. And obviously, it's contingent on what our district has put in place of the pre-employment drug testing. That's something that they're fully aware. That's the only rationale that I want to bring to you because again, at the end of the day, do we really want the best qualified teacher to teach our kids? The answer is yes. And that would only hinder us because, you know, the nature of the board meeting is October the 10th. Unfortunately, we had a special board meeting today, but so this is what we'd be looking at. And we were, and we do have a few vacancies only because sometimes these teachers leave due to family situations, especially with this Harvey incident. A lot of our teachers got impacted, not all of them, some of them got impacted, they had family. So, that's my discussion that I wanted to share with you. Obviously, in the end, it's up to you, trustees.
My take here is that I think the superintendent should retain the authority to hire teachers and bus drivers just because to move faster. And I really haven't seen any compelling evidence that we're overstaffed in our teaching. That we're overstaffed with teachers, period. So, that's what makes me, I'm not concerned about the number of teachers we have as it relates to staffing. So, I don't have any, I don't have the compelling evidence for me to say that it should be any different than what it is now.
Can you stay the same then? The way that we have it there?
Yeah, that's my take on it.
Okay.
What is the, what is the ratio that you're looking for?
I mean, I think-
That you can sustain? That you can afford? You know, and it's like, it's like if you're a farmer and you have a couple of fields, quite a few fields to plow, that you can only afford three tractors. Sure, it'd be nice to have 10. And the reason that I, that I have reservations on this is because I looked at the, some numbers that I was given at Todd. And those numbers were pretty, pretty staggering. The majority of the classes were 12, 13. One of them was six with two teachers in there. And there was, the majority of them were in the 12 to 15 range. And maybe it increased a little bit, but we haven't increased that much. And to me, that's like, you know, we're way, way overstaffed, maybe about 10 teachers at that campus. And then you multiply that by four, that's 40 teachers in the middle school.
So, that data was true for the other two, three, two, three middle schools?
I don't know what it was at the other middle schools, I just saw that.
And some of them, it's not, not so much like so Todd. And remember, when we did the rezoning, the rezoning was done with intent from Todd to Solis. And if you look at the numbers, they're pretty much are pretty accurate that we rezoned about 130 kids. And they reflect that Solis has a higher number. To address Coach's comment on that, there's truth to that. But I, as I shared with him and the other trustee that visited with me, it has got to do with a teaming concept. And I've already mentioned that that's something that all of us need to embrace and say, we're going to have to basically do away with it completely. Because as a teaming concept, that's where you're locked in. The teaming concept drives, the teacher drives the team, not so much the total number of students. So, when you have three teams in sixth grade, three teams in seventh grade, and three teams in eighth grade, we have kept that because of the teaming concept. And I know that the principals, if you ask them, two years ago, I told them that. But they have kind of maintained, maintained, well, we had a meeting on Thursday, last Thursday, and I actually met with them. I already told them, I'm giving it to you right now so you can begin to digest it and start breaking it slowly to your staff that we are going to officially do it with the teaming. What is that gonna do to us? It's going to be able to allow us to let the students drive the teacher now. Now, they, they were willing to, okay, can we make some modifications? I said, well, I mean, we'll cross our bridge when we get to it. But the bottom line is that the student should drive the teacher. But again, going back to this particular item that we have here, let's say that we didn't have that, we didn't have teaming right now. We're still following the same dilemma that the teacher that we would have to recommend, even if we were at a 20 to one, would have to still wait to go to the trustees for approval when it comes to that. So, that the ratios may be lonesome, or that's, that's true. But to replace them is the concern here. And I think we mentioned about writing teachers. Writing teachers, one of the things that we're gonna be looking at because that was something that was added in addition to your sixth grade and your eighth grade. Basically, I think it was three, four years ago, I don't know exactly when, they were brought in in addition to a specialist. And yes, you're gonna see that, you know, just like the, you look back in time. And again, I apologize, but I always gotta compare with athletics and band. When I played football, we had six coaches, three in office, three in defense. And the band, we had the band, they only had head director and assistant director. But you go out there right now and it's not the same because they specialize. But we also need to be able to look at, when it comes to the teachers now, that is the one concern that we know we're gonna be addressing. But it still doesn't answer the point that we're trying, or that I'm trying to make here is that being able to hire the qualified, best qualified teacher as soon as we can is, is what, what we're after. Not, obviously, the ratio we're gonna address.
I have a recommendation. You know, the school board naturally retains the right to hire, fire employees based on your recommendation. This, this school board meets about twice a month, at least.
Seven times last time.
Like seven times last-
August was our hot month.
Yeah. But you can all, I mean, hopefully, it doesn't happen regularly. But you can also, what you can do is if you do take back that control over hiring and firing, at the beginning of each regular board meeting, say, okay, what's our teacher situation this month? Oh, we're three short, okay, we'll give you three for this month. On that board meeting, we're gonna allocate three for you if, because we have, just kind of get, that way you as a board can still look at on a month-to-month basis. But then allocate him a certain number per month that you'll give him permission to hire that particular month. Gives him a little flexibility to hire people right away, but it gives you a little control to actually monitor on a month-to-month what your staffing looks like. That's, that's one way you can, you can do it.
Again, because we're trying to meet one of the goals that we just said, we just approved, is a fun balance. And so, I think we need to work all together to maintain that. Because it all comes back, can we afford them and et cetera.
I think we're talking about two different things.
Well, yeah, I mean, the thing is- I need a math teacher like right now, not like next month. Because I've got kids without a math teacher already for four weeks. And so, we're having to wait and we have no teachers. So, the stuff that we get from sub hub are not certified math teachers to teach that content.
No, I understand what he's saying is that we meet so often that, I mean, we could call a special board meeting. I mean, I'd rather do that than have a five-hour, six-hour meeting like last week. I mean, that, by 10:30, 11 o'clock, if we've been using our brain all day, you're exhausted. And we can't, you know, the discussions go on and on in executive because it's like we get sidetracked. So, I understand where you're coming from, but also, we have responsibilities as a board too, to monitor the staff and encompass everything.
But it's not a new addition, it's a replacement. That's what it is. That's what we're, principals have concerns about.
They're all overall teaching.
It's not just, it's not just-
Can you, is there any way that y'all can, can go under and combine classes?
I think for the high schools, the high schools are-
Right now, we're rotating the teachers, the math teachers, so they're having to use 20, at least 20 minutes of their conference time just to get that, the students going. And I'm a board math teacher, so I go under to monitor too. But it's like I've got a job to run the school as well.
So, what happened over the last month? Because we're just discussing this now. I mean, is that-
There's not a big pool out there of math teachers, there is not. She's just told me she needs to.
Now, keep in mind, trustee, the two high schools, they're totally different scenario because they do need the staff. Now, when we approved, when US trustees approved the budget on September 1st, that was with the staff that we have there. And so, that's, that's the point that I want to also make that if we were to bring something in addition to, that is something that I've shared with you. And when we, when the budget was approved, we also need to look at the possibility of an increase in numbers. But right now, let me tell you the numbers that DHS has today, 2027. They weren't supposed to hit 2000 till the end of the year. Donna North, they're already at 21, 25. They weren't supposed to hit it till the end of the year. And that's what they have today as we speak right now. And so, that's why it's important and, and you know, the fact that these individuals are qualified. This person, if we don't, if we don't approve him, then PSJ is looking for him.
And then you're gonna start getting parental plans that-
Yeah, the kids are gonna be without a certified teacher for a long time.
Yeah, I think what needs to be done is that we need to get a, a report from PIMS. And that way, we know exactly how many, how many teachers you have, how many, and why. Because look, you've got the same number of elementary teachers right now, probably more. And then you're saying that we grew, okay, we grew a whole bunch in the, in the high school.
Right.
Okay? So, we lost a whole bunch in elementary. So, why do we still have those teachers here? Why weren't those teachers let go and the high school taken care of? If you knew that was happening, you know, it, it's just, this is just, you know, poor planning all around, but that's what it is.
Actually, we've, we've tried to reduce the elementary staff as much as we could and to move teachers where the growth was gonna be. But, you know, as I explained last week, how the dynamics of the way the classes are structured, being bilingual or transitional or Spanish, it's very difficult, especially these small campuses, to get a very reasonable ratio. I saw, I showed you all the ratios, they were, they were still very low. But there are some classes, because of that dynamics, are hitting 22, 23. And we assured you all that we're not gonna get waivers this year. So, we've gotta do what we need to do. The over staffing that we, that you're talking about, I do agree with you, in the middle schools, we do need to look at that. But I think the, the policy that allows Mr. Castillo to hire really comes into play in, in the late year or summer months where we're competing for good teachers. And as, as expeditious, we give our teachers. If we have to, and remember, we have that, the insurance, the drug testing that takes time. So, it does, we wanna be as expeditious as possible.
I mean, if you're gonna offer someone a position, okay, you're gonna send them out to get drug tested and this. It's gonna take a week between-
Actually, the DMT, Mr. Romero, I'm sorry.
But that's after you approve. If you were to have that authority, you would approve and then we do all that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Now, one of the other things that, that, that needs to be considered is, okay, we may have over staffing at the middle schools. Okay, why don't we get some middle school teachers?
They have to be certified through high school, especially in science, like composite science.
We're looking at that right now.
We're looking at that.
We are looking at that.
Microbiology, science sixth grade generalists.
I don't think we have enough data right now to like make a change to this policy. From what I think about, when I think of all the ways to save money and we do need to maintain a 30-day balance in our, I mean, a 90-day balance in our fund, I think we're all on the same page there. I always, I really go to the, getting rid of teachers is always at the bottom of my list. Like, I wanna pursue and evaluate every single other avenue before I start getting rid of teachers. Because I think about 400 people who filled out the survey at the end of the year last year. And I can go back through and actually look at the number, but like one of the top themes that came out of that was teachers were saying, we need decrease in class size, we need decrease in class size. And right now, I hear you, Mr. Sane-Sedos, there's something about looking at what's going on at WTA. I hear that. I also, I am not convinced that this is a, an issue across our entire district. It's not compelling enough for me to think that we should change this. It sounds like there's some places like WTA needs to be looked at, but it's not for me something that I feel like should change the policy for the whole district.
I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Trustees have final authority to employ, dismiss, and hire teachers and bus drivers.
And bus drivers?
And bus drivers.
I accept the man.
Can I, can I say something?
Get into motion, by Mr. Billman. Yes, you may.
If we're put on hold for bus drivers, we're very limited on bus drivers right now. So, if they come, we, we're also competing against other schools in the district for bus drivers. If we've gotta wait for board meetings, they're not gonna come. We're gonna lose them.
Have we lost any right now?
Yes, we have.
How many?
Uh, I believe about five.
From May to here, it's been 15.
And they're going to our neighboring districts who are paying more.
So, we've lost to PSJ, we've lost to Edinburgh.
With all due respect, board members, we just approved these very ambitious goals that require qualified teachers in the classrooms to achieve that.
We're not gonna deny any of them.
And if, the concern is the 90 days, we are at 90 days currently. So, we have to continue to maintain that. I know we have a very responsible superintendent who will address the issues of your concern. I think we need to stay focused on achieving academic success. Do we have to tighten up the belt in the classroom? Maybe, because we should be getting better scores.
District why we have to tighten up the belt. And that's why I'm here to tell you that we, we need to maintain control here.
Tighten up the belt in the education. How it's, how, how the education is being implemented in the classroom. Because we should be getting better scores, I agree.
That's y'all's responsibility.
Exactly, that is our responsibility.
That's y'all's responsibility, absolutely. You know, you say you have issues at Todd, that's y'all's responsibility to fix this problem.
And it is ours too as a board. It is our responsibility as well to support folks, to support the district, to get better scores. We're much a part of trying to get them, the change in student achievement as they are too.
We're not gonna deny anybody that. It's a process of, of, of where we need to be, where we're going with this district. We need to move on. And we've been installing, installing, and how are we gonna pay for all this? You know, every meeting, we're bringing in people. He's, he has a list every darn meeting.
And we, but we approved a budget that included all those positions that he's bringing in. This board approved a budget.
Okay, one thing I'd like to make a, a statement on is that, correct me if I'm wrong, we're supposed to be cutting back through attrition. Correct?
Yes.
And, and have we been practicing attrition?
Coach, uh-
You know, we haven't.
Can I answer your question?
In the auxiliary areas, where we have?
Yes, auxiliary, but that's, that's only so much. And we've only cut back how many?
I don't have the number memorized, but I know we've been, we haven't been hiring maintenance at all. We haven't been hiring custodians. If there's vacancies that, that were created because, you know, some department heads or custodians, I think the students left, then we've, we've filled those with existing people. But we have been trying to practice attrition as much as we can. We've saved a lot of money with attrition that we've done so far.
I think about 13 to 18 custodians.
See, the, the only thing, I do have an issue with the, with the bus driver part. And I think the hiring of the teachers, you know, I understand the position that, that you're in. But you have to understand the position that we're in. We've been asking you guys to cut back, cut back, cut back, move the people where they need to be, and it's not getting done. And so, now you've got, you've got a motion and you've got a second. And this is for, for both the bus drivers and the teachers?
Yeah.
Correct, Mr. Billman?
Mm-hmm.
That was a motion, that was my motion.
Coach, so we're okay with, if, if the case is to where you have that vacancy and it's okay to have our kids with a substitute for a whole month? You know, I'm, I'm not okay with that. And I-
No, you've got, you've got plenty of people in the district where you could move somebody from within. And you already said that he had one that's been there a whole month and he's still-
I already recommended someone, so I'll just wait for approval. And I'm really sure that first people have a teacher that's certified.
I'm really lucky we could read-
Where was he reading?
Today, because they haven't phoned you.
So, for the last month, we haven't had anybody that, that had been okay.
Well, they weren't okay, but they were managing.
And you can't really move people easily because they have to be certified for that grade level and that subject area.
There's a lot of variables.
We're, we're still in discussion, right? Because you've got one and two.
No, we're gonna make a motion and we're gonna make a second.
Yeah, one and two. Because you're in the discussion.
You have a vote.
Okay, we'll vote on it and take it from there.
Okay, we're, we're still at a, we have a motion, the second, all in favor?
Favor. I oppose.
Oppose?
Oppose.
Okay, and at this time, I'm gonna oppose because I need the bus drivers. So, you wanna bring that back at the next board meeting? You may. And I think that the message has been sent to you that, you know, we need, we need to make every effort to try to house those people where they belong. And the only reason that I'm holding off is because I know the bus drivers are pretty, pretty key for us. And I, I did go to a meeting and I did get a lot of information on that. And I just feel that, hopefully, between now and the next board meeting, that some, some attention is paid to this matter and that it doesn't come back.
The bus driver?
The teacher.
Oh, yeah, no, absolutely.
I have a question from Mr. I'm sorry, go ahead and finish.
Go ahead.
From May to now, how many have been, how many have left our district with a bus driver or with the transportation department?
Between now and May, I can't tell you, but I can tell you just recently, like this past month, it's been five. And I believe there's maybe like two more that are contemplating, you know, they've already gone to another district now. Yeah, so there's seven. And I will tell you that the main reason is no pay increase.
I'm sorry, there's-
Because of no pay increase. Because logistics and our pay-
I've heard otherwise. I've heard otherwise. And I've heard there's a total of 15 that might be leaving total.
Well, right now, we haven't, we haven't heard of those the whole 15, but I can tell you it's probably five for sure.
What are we gonna do about that?
Mr. Discretion.
I have a question.
If it's one day, they, they do-
This is, this is getting off the, off the-
Off base here.
And basically, that was the, the vote? So, last thing, adjourned?
No, you have to agree.
No, one more item.
One more item, President Trustees. Again, this whole intent of this meeting was really for the board of goals, but took the opportunity to get to each other's end. Number three, discussion of possible action to solicit request for qualifications, RMP numbers 091517-041 for professional legal services for Dona's League for the 2017, 2020 school year. And that, when you read the rationale, it is attorneys will investigate, negotiate, resolve, and if necessary, pursue litigation for all damages and compensation to which Donna SD may be entitled, as well as to compromise and settle all claims arising out of defective construction and or design of schools or buildings that are 10 years or less. And this is what we had discussed last time, that we need to go out and get three RPTs. Even though US trustees do have the authority, but basing on what Ms. Lindero Meadows is recommending, we need to go out and compete. This is the competition. This is the only means we're gonna solicit a qualification.
And I'm wondering if, can we clarify the language? Because this seems, to me, seems too general for this, like service. What is this service called specifically? It's gotta be more specific than professional legal services. Is it like construction?
It's gonna fall under construction litigation.
Yeah, I can-
That's why when I read the rationale, I was really, wanted to be certain that we read, read the rationale.
Construction litigation?
Construction litigation. For any building that's 10 years or younger, that obviously, it falls under that category. And we didn't wanna read whatever one of them has because then we need to hand it to our spokes. That's, we'll try to make it as general as possible.
Okay, there was, there was- Okay, there was, there was some, some questions that I had on this. As far as, when you guys put this one out, I want to make sure that, number one, that whoever gets this R F P, whoever puts it out, did they include that we have our legal counsel involved? Because I don't want to pay our legal counsel to get involved here on our behalf. So you know, if whoever is making this bid, they have to include whatever percentage they get because we don't want to pay them, we want them to pay. So that's got to be part of, part of the bid. You know, if, if they're going to come in here and say, okay, here, here's these documents. They're going to look at them. If they're called in to testify, if they're called in to investigate, if they're called in to do any work, I don't want it coming out of our pay, I want it coming out of their percentage. So that, so when they, when they make, when they make the bid, I want that included in there. I don't want it to go as well as administrator fees as well as other-
That's their job, that's their job to come and-
Those are not, they're not, they're not our legal counsel.
When they represent-
No, but they're going to come make the recommendation, right? They're just going to, they're going to make the recommendation of what they found.
Well, that's, that's what I would like to see included in the R F P. If they don't want to participate in the R F P, they don't have to.
What was presented last week-
What was presented last week was a lot of-
It was, they, based on the settlement or the money that would be awarded to the district, they would be paid out of that, all their expenses, and they would get thirty-five percent. Am I correct? And that's why we said, well, you know, so that leaves the district very little.
But we're going to get a school space, right? That's the, that's what we want.
It's possible, it depends on-
And they find nothing wrong with it, they're not getting anything out of it.
No, but if they find something wrong and they go and they, there's a settlement or litigation or whatever, the money the district gets, we have, the district has to pay them for, reimburse them for all their expenses and then they get thirty-five percent.
Yeah, but that's how, usually that's how it works in any trade. You go to a car accident, that's what's going to happen.
Well, that's why, that's why it's put out for a kill. Whoever comes in and whatever company gives you the best deal, that's what you go with. But like I said, I do want this, but if there's any, any involvement with them, that they pay, then let us. I don't want to end up paying, oh, here's thirty or forty thousand so these guys can go and investigate something or to mediate or to show up for a court hearing or whatever. If they're going to have to do that, let them pay for it, let them come out of their pocket.
So any involvement that Mr. Farid is involved, they have to pay.
It's going to be part of the R F Q.
Okay, I understand.
Part of the contingency contract. So the district has to pay for it directly. That's what you said, yeah.
Because we can get caught up in now, this term.
Oh, yeah.
And I think that's a minor thing.
I, there is one correction, I believe the R F Q number ends with a two instead of a one. So we just make that clarification. It's oh, nine, one, five, one, seven, oh, four, two. That's right?
Yes.
Okay.
Which one is it, Mr.?
The one that Sandy met with you on Monday.
Right, but, so you want to fix on this?
No, because we had her supposed to, she already gave it to you on Monday when she met with you.
Thank you for bringing it up.
It doesn't change the item, it's just a clarification.
Just a number, it should be a two, not a one.
Okay, so basically, all this is, is just going out for R F Qs. That's it. So whatever comes in, comes in and so we need to have a vote on this. So I need a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Robina.
A second.
Second by Mr. Billman, all in favor?
Favor, in favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Just clarify, Mr. President, we changed oh, four, one to oh, four, two, please.
Okay, the R F Q number is zero, nine, one, five, one, seven, dash, oh, four, two. There was a typographical error, they had a four, one at the end.
Thank you.
Any other, okay, need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Robina, second by Mr. Swatch, all in favor?
In favor.
All opposed? Motion carries, this meeting is adjourned before eight o'clock.
You're welcome, you don't want to keep them.
I'm going to keep mine.